I call this meeting the Bryan City Schools Board of Education to order. We will begin this evening with a public hearing. If you please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
In allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Scott?
Here.
Ben?
Here.
Deb?
Here.
Dustin?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
Thank you.
We are beginning tonight with Mr. Bassett, please.
Well, good evening. An update on federal grants. We're looking, actually tomorrow, they say our preliminary allocations for the 2021 school year will begin. So we're having a great night to talk about it. We look at this year's, this year's grants in Title I, which again, Title I dollars is based on our low-income student status. Title I is to ensure all, all children have fair, equal, and significant opportunity to attain a high-quality education. There are two types of Title I programs. There's targeted assistance where we can just pull certain kids out. And work with them in reading and math, but there's a school-wide program. We are a school-wide program. We became a school-wide program a couple of years ago, basically because our free-reduced percentage went above forty percent. And that makes you school-wide forever. What school-wide does for us is allows us to help every kid then through the Title I program instead of, instead of targeted assistance for that. This year in our school-wide program, we see three hundred forty-nine thousand, seven hundred seventy-seven dollars and seventy cents. There is a portion of that that we have to service to the non-publics. So we provide services to our two non-publics this year that were in our district. So a very portion of that is fourteen thousand, seventy-two dollars. We allocate that to them. We're the fiscal agent for that. We work with them in consultation for their Title I program. We use Title I to offset salaries of our teachers. Since we are school-wide, we can help everybody. Some schools have targeted assistance at the full, just a Title I teacher. So we kind of force it there to be school-wide. Title II A was to improve teacher quality. This year allocation was sixteen thousand, three ninety-one. Of that, the non-public share was seven thousand and forty-two dollars. We use this, we can use the Title II A as a class-size reduction grant. That's what we use it for, for first grade, offset, offset the cost of a first-grade teacher this year for a class-size reduction. Title III is an LEP, Limited English Proficiency Grant. We're in a consortium there. We don't have enough of our student population that fits this criteria. So we're in a consortium with the ESC. Our share of that this year was seventeen hundred and sixteen dollars. It flows through the ESC. We build the ESC at the end of the fiscal year for that. We use that as tutoring. We do have some kids that meet that criteria. We use some one-on-one, one-on-two tutoring for our Title III LEP. Title IV A, a new grant a couple of years ago, students support in academic enrichment. Our share of that is twenty-eight thousand, six seventy. Twenty-one hundred and seventy-three dollars is for the non-publics. We use this, these funds to help pay for our social workers. It's really a student enrichment, it's a social-emotional grant, and our social workers really fit that, fit that criteria. IDAB, Special Education Grant, once again, based on our special education numbers. Four hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight, twenty-two cents. Forty-four thousand, five seventy-five is the non-public portion of that. We use that to pay for special education to teachers across our district. KDA, KDA VIII basically is, is our IDAB funds that we use before. IDAB, Early Special Education Grant, a small grant, fifteen thousand, nine sixty is a preschool grant. Use that to offset our, our special education preschool teacher. Grants in total, nine hundred forty-nine thousand, four fifty-four, and seventy-three cents on all for this past fiscal year. We really don't know what we see this, next year, coming year. We're usually around that ballpark. It's usually the same, doesn't change a whole lot. I've heard anything from the federal government that they are slashing these programs. So we should be very comparable, since our population has not changed a whole lot coming years. IDAB again, just to offset costs of teachers, that's a huge cost, it's savings for us. We're talking that amount of money. We want to continue to do that next year, looking to offset salaries and wages to help our, to help our kids. Questions on those? We'll go through the federal grants real quick. Lot of stipulations tied to it, such as IDAB. We have proved every year that we are spending more than, than the previous year in special education services out of the general fund. We've had no problem showing up every week. Wellness updates, I was continuing to have a great committee in place. Oh, sorry.
Will there ever be a time where we cap out on that additional spending, do you think? Or is it always?
If we go the way we have been trending, no, okay? And you don't lose your funds if you would cap out? I have to write a huge rationale why, such as, hey, we had a big access of special ed kids, right? We don't need as many teachers, so maybe we were reducing staff. Don't foresee that. But that could play out, right? So that's right, our rationale is, hey, this is why we're not spending as much. So isn't it just a pay and fund? In my five years of doing this, we haven't been close to that number. It all jumps up. Wellness, again, great committee in place again. We received some wellness money again. Continue with our wellness warriors programs, which has been successful of just promoting, promoting and helping staff. We've been winning like an award from the county as one of the healthiest employers in the county, which is great. And, you know, part of that is their, their hard work on that. Food service nutrition updates, this school year, prior to the shutdown, we're averaging about a thousand type-A lunches a day. It's really the type-A is what we try to promote with that. Above that was about fifty type-A salad bars a day. We do offer a salad bar at the six-to-12 building as an alternate of the type-A. It's really, I think it's really great for our kids, that they're on free-reduced, and they're going to come and get a tray every day. They don't have the luxury to get an hamburger and fries. They have an option of, why I really don't like is on the tray today. They can go through, get a nice salad, it's a great salad bar, get a dinner roll, get milk, get fruit, and have a different option. So, you know, fifty does sound like a lot, but it's a lot to those fifty kids that are, that are going through that line. Last year in commodity money, we were just, just under sixty thousand that we allocated, that we had given to us in commodity money. Of that, this, this sounds kind of similar to saying, we allocated ten thousand dollars of that to the Department of Defense. Department of Defense was a fresh fruits and vegetables program. They'll deliver weekly to us, and it's great produce. We get our salad bar out of that. It's kind of in the fall, we get some great-looking apples. They'll send us some oranges in the winter, grapes, really fresh, delivered once a week. And everybody says, Department of Defense? Yes, I don't know the history there, but it's a great program to take advantage of. If you look at our menu, everybody's always asking, what's the, what's the favorite? French toast, sticks, and sausage is always a hit. You can put mashed potatoes with anything and it's a hit. So chicken strips, chicken and noodles, kids love it. Spaghetti, of course, our school spaghetti, just is high on the list as well. Prices for next year, so prices are kind of determined a little bit by the federal government. You have to show that you are making above what they're reimbursing you for free meals. So you're charging above that. Next year, I ran, it's called a payment equity tool today, we're fine for next year. Prices the same there, which is good news. Questions on?
So all of these monies you've gone over this evening were for last school?
Last school. We're going to have allocations for next school.
Right, it's how, right.
Yes, I was expecting them today, but it's, so hopefully tomorrow. Thank you.
IDAB, the end of the public hearing portion of our meeting tonight. We will move on into our regular meeting for Monday, June fifteenth of twenty twenty here at the Bryan Elementary School. So shall we do the role again?
Scott?
Here.
Ben?
Here.
Deb?
Here.
Dustin?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
Thank you.
We all received the minutes from the May meeting, regular meeting. Trust that you've had a chance to review those. Are there any corrections or additions? During that, now we'll take motion.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is public participation. I'm not going to make, pay aware of anything under that section. We'll move on to communications. First up would be a report from Ford County. I did not receive a report, did you? I did not. Okay. Thank you. Next, under communications, would be an update on esports. Matt Cullen or Mr. Murray?
Yeah, I, we don't have Mr. Cullen here with us, so at this point, I think we're going to postpone. Information he wanted to pass along to the board, and we'll reach back out to him to see if at a later date he wishes to post, to pass that information along. I would speak for him. I have some data and some information for, so I can briefly overview if you want.
Well, why don't we, why don't we share this presentation with the board? Because we haven't done that yet. We were going to let Mr. Cullen kind of overview it for you. But we can share that with you and then invite him back to answer questions.
All right. Moving on then to the Treasurers' Report and Recommendations.
We'll begin with the cash reconciliation. At Farmers Merchants Bank, we had four million, one hundred thirteen thousand, three hundred fifty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. Total adjustments of five hundred thirty-four thousand, forty-six dollars and fifty cents. Total investments of thirteen million, eight hundred thirteen thousand, one hundred twenty-six dollars and eighty-one cents. Four thousand, five hundred dollars in petty cash for a total fund balance of seventeen million, three hundred ninety-six thousand, nine hundred thirty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. In addition to that, the customary financial reports were in your folder for this evening. Were there any questions on any financial reports? If not, I'd like to take a moment to discuss bond refunding. As you will recall, we recently went through a bond refunding just this last year, finished up in March. They saved us approximately half a million dollars in interest costs across the life of that particular set of bonds. And when we began that process, we had told you that we were looking at two different sets of bonds to refinance. And that one of them was ripe for refinancing, and that's the one that we went forward with. And the other one, we thought we would have a good opportunity to refinance when we could do so in a non-taxable manner. We have now reached that point where we're ready to begin the process of refunding those bonds as a tax-exempt refunding. This set of bonds is the 2014 A Bond Series. And we are looking to do a refunding with that, which will take it from seven point one million dollars worth of outstanding bonds to six point eight, six point five million dollars worth of outstanding bonds. And we think we will be able to reduce the interest rate on those bonds from three point seven nine percent down to approximately one point nine five percent. If we are able to successfully do that, we are looking at saving in terms of cash flow over the remaining life of those bonds, a little over five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we are going to be bringing to you next month the authorization to proceed with that. But this is going to be similar in nature to what we just did, which, and in fact, having just done it, it's going to be a little less work. A lot of the work that needs to be done, won't even have to be updated, because we're so close in time to the last refunding. So it'll be a little bit simpler for us on the administrative end. And we're going to be able to bring in another significant savings to taxpayers of our district by refunding these bonds. We do, just to remind you, we're not committed to do this until the moment that we sell the bonds. So we can go all the way down this road, and then if, in the meantime, the interest rates go up to where it's not favorable, we can stop instantaneously. So there's no risk of causing an increase in, in costs to the taxpayers on these bonds. We can only save money going down this road. And so we'll go down the road, and as long as we're going to save money, we'll, we'll finish it when we get there. If, if markets change, then, then we can all stop.
Yes, sir.
Will this be yearly thing then? So one point seven nine, can we lock that in for how long, what term?
It's like, for the life of the bonds. So it'll carry through that original lifespan, which is of the bonds. So they were twenty... Yes, it's like another fourteen years. So it, basically, that length of time when, that we set the levy, the bond levy for, that's when the bonds will end. So there's never an extension of how long those bonds are out there. They're, they're only there while we have the taxing authority, because they have to be paid off when that taxing authority is gone. And that taxing authority will be gone at that set, set date, which is, off the top of my head, around twenty thirty-five.
Once we get one point seven, we may not ever be able to refund these two days.
You?
That's pretty low.
Yes, I, it, it is pretty low, but I wouldn't have thought we would have got here either. So that's, it's, it's hard to tell. We will certainly keep our eye on it, and, and if another opportunity presents itself, we will take it at that point as well. Okay. Moving on to my recommendations. My first recommendation is to transfer zero point five mils from the Permanent Improvement Fund to the O thirty-four Maintenance Fund. Per our memorandum of understanding with the OFCC. As you may recall, part of our agreement when building the new six-to-12 and refurbishing this building was rather than levying an additional half a mill tax, that we would supply that fund from our Permanent Improvement Fund each year. This is this annual action to do so. Additionally, every year, we transfer the net rental income from the Arts and Education Building to the Permanent Improvement Fund. That's the money we, we receive from both Bryan City Christian School and renting out that building. We transfer it to the Permanent Improvement Fund each year. I also have the final modification of appropriations for fiscal year 2020. We just continue to try to get those budgets right-sized here as we wrap up the fiscal year. And also, the final appropriations for fiscal year 2021, the next budgetary year. Just a word on that, we're not doing temporary appropriations simply because we modify our appropriations every month anyways, as, as we continue to try to fine-tune our spending plan. And so there's no particular need to adopt temporary appropriations instead of final appropriations as we do that monthly adjustment. Next, we have the NBDC Technical Service Contract. This is our contract with our IT providers for the year. I then have the approved milk bid for the 2020, 2021 school year, which came in just a little bit below the bid that we accepted last year. Again, from the same provider, just one bid was offered, and we are recommending that bid to you. The approval of property liability and complete insurance quote from Andrews and O'Neill and Low. This is, again, insurance provided through Sorsa, which we switched to last year. It's about a five thousand dollar increase in premium this year, primarily due to a complete reappraisal of school properties, which was conducted back in January. I have the agreement for the David Betts Double Play Diamond, which our baseball and softball team use as an annual agreement that we do. A contract for speech services with Striker Local School District, where we share a speech pathologist with them who is on their payroll. And then I ask your authorization to participate in all federal programs for the 2020, 2021 school year, including all federal grants, as well as the federal breakfast-lunch program, including all free and reduced breakfasts, lunches, and commodity program as described by Mr. Bassett in our public hearing. Any questions on those recommendations?
Given all that, technical services contract, is she, the things that are consistent, put next by the services that we're going to use? Is that the three services that you use of that, that whole list?
Correct.
Okay. And then the cost associated with that, times the eighteen eighty-six.
Right.
So it's about fifty-six.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Can I have an acceptance motion?
I made a motion to accept Treasurers' Recommendations.
Thank you, Scott.
Scott.
And Mike.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, our requirements for all business for being student success and wellness funds.
Student success and wellness funds, we had a recommendation last month which we tabled. I just have it here to remind you that it is tabled. And I believe it is an issue that we are going to want to discuss at the board retreat coming up later this week. I believe that we don't need to do any further discussion of it at this time.
And the next item is the CARES Act funding.
CARES Act funding as well, I believe is part of that larger discussion with the student success and wellness funds. But just a quick update, we've been allocated roughly two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars there. And again, as with the all federal grants, some of that money is for non-publics in our district. There are two different calculations right now for how to allocate funds to those non-publics. And we, we've not been given guidance on which one to use at this point. On the low end, it's about twenty-two hundred dollars. On the high end, it's a little more than eleven thousand dollars that we have to allocate to the non-publics. And then we can take that money and use it for expenses that were developed in continuing operations or providing special services because of the COVID outbreak. And so it was possible to use for this fiscal year. However, the timetable to, to make that application was, we felt, just too rushed to have a considered decision. And so we were going to delay and use those monies in the next fiscal year, which, which is perfectly acceptable under, under that program. And so we will have that as part of our grant program for fiscal year twenty-one, that we receive that money. I, no, but it is, we have to submit a budget, and then we will be able to start drawing against it. It is available to be received, we just, we just have to go through the process.
Anything else, any questions? Next on the agenda is new business, new business with the COVID response for school year 2020, 2021.
Yeah, so I'll hop in here and take this one. Like all of us, we are all still awaiting the parameters and guidelines set forth by the state that we must follow entering the 2020, 2021 school year. So with that, we're all waiting the new news, hopefully coming by the end of the month, if not into the first weeks of July, with what those parameters exactly are. In the meantime, we are planning and continuing to stay in touch with our local health department. I know Mrs. Savage has sat in many health meetings with Jim Watkins, the Health Commissioner, and the area superintendents. And I'm starting to join those as well here in the near future. And simply, we want, we want to, one, we want to take the information from the state that comes to us and be able to break that down into the regional level. And then ultimately, the local level with our local health departments, so that we can, for the most part, stay similar and consistent with how we approach this. Because we're all going to be put into following the same guidelines. And so the more consistent and the more we can share ideas, the better off our students will be. Ultimately, it's all for student safety, so we're going to take the parameters set forth before us and make sure that our students are safe. We'll make sure we, we take those guidelines and make them fit into what works here on our campus. So there is a draft plan out there from the Ohio Department of Education. There are many news outlets that we are aware of, but at this point, nothing is still one hundred percent confirmed as to what those guidelines will be. So we are continuing to monitor every day. We, again, hope to have that information coming to us in the next few weeks. And then it will be a wealth of information to our families, into all of our stakeholders in the community, as to what that exactly looks like upon return in August. So the governor did say it is his goal to have students physically in the buildings as we return back to school for the 2020 school year. So that is one piece of information that we are hanging our hats on right now. But beyond that, we don't want to speculate too much exactly what those guidelines are going to be. So a process to be continued. And from everything we're hearing, it's a positive trend at this point with, with the numbers and the data coming back at the state levels. So we're hopeful that we can be as close to normal as possible and provide a safe learning environment.
Thank you for that, that update. Obviously, it's at the top of many people's minds right now and making plans. But I appreciate the fact that it's just really too soon yet, that the guideline's not solidly before us. So I appreciate all the work that I know is going on and thinking about those different scenarios. Okay. Superintendent's recommendations would be next on the agenda.
Thank you. So we have two items for your consideration tonight. The first is an MOU with the OC union. This MOU would be in effect for the 2020, 2021 school year only. In our new, in our contract negotiations with OC, we negotiated some new language that in the 2020, 21 school year does not quite fit with the calendar, the way that the days of the week fall. So we sat down with our union representation and worked out an agreement that because of that day that falls really outside of the normal expectations, we will allow our members to use a personal day or a D-Day on the, the final day of school. Normally, in the new contract negotiations, that would not be allowed. But again, this will be in effect for just one year, just to kind of fix the calendar that is beneficial to both parties. So I ask your approval of that MOU. And then second, I ask for your approval, Mark's really done a lot of the groundwork on this, along with Steve Alsfall. But the band trip for the spring of twenty-one, which would take place during spring break, our band director has chosen Toronto, Canada as the destination. This will include educational opportunities, performance opportunities, and cultural opportunities for our students. We are fully aware that travel is also one of those items that is not necessarily kind of black and white right now. So there have been extra conversations and precautions included within the agreement with the travel company that if we would have to, for any reason, cancel because of a pandemic or other situations, we do have those options. We're really excited about the opportunities that this trip is going to provide to our band students. We feel that our students benefit from being able to see, you know, an experienced world outside of Bryan, Ohio. We think that that's very beneficial. And Mark, I don't know if I missed anything that you think is critical before the board makes a, a decision.
No, I think you hit it all very well. The reason that they're planning this down is it does take almost a full calendar year to plan a trip of this nature. So Mr. Paul was waiting out the COVID nineteen protocols to see if we would have any new news. And at this point, we, we still don't regarding the 2020, 21 school year. So she does want to begin moving forward so that her students and the families have sufficient time to plan, not only with the calendar, but for finances as well to help fund the trip. So they are very much looking forward to this opportunity.
The one point I would, I would add to the board is we, we have a four-year cycle with our music programs, where they take it in turn to take a trip. And this last year that we just finished was, was the empty year. So three years they go, one year they don't. So there was consideration given to just delaying this trip by a year. But to do so would mean that the incoming senior band class would not have an opportunity to take a trip. And that's why we're recommending that we proceed with this trip, provided that it is, you know, indeed safe when we arrive in March, rather than just delaying it until next year.
Mark, there are fail-safes in place. If it were to get canceled, in terms of the seniors, then we wouldn't get to go, in terms of refunds, things of that nature?
Yeah, so I've heard in Kevin's head now, and in-depth work with the travel agency, Bob Rogers Travel. So they have a really nice plane design for reimbursement should something unpredictable... So they have a really nice plan designed for reimbursement should something unpredictable happen. And the trip is voluntary. It's not required. So if a student or family does not feel safe because of the current circumstances we're all facing as a nation right now, they can make that choice not to attend if they desire not to. But at least the opportunity is there. And we'll have to monitor heavily along with her what protocols need to be followed for a trip of this nature in March of 2021.
It'd be completely refundable up through, I believe it's February first, and any time after that would be 75% refund. And that would be communicated right up front as part of the initial information with band parents so that they have that understanding.
And this rotates through the different departments of the music?
Correct. It rotates, Baylen, Torres.
So if it were canceled, would bands still be in the lead position to do it the next time?
I would recommend that if we cancel it, we would be looking, trying to fit. We'd have to try to find a way so that we're not shorthanding two whole classes. Obviously, this year's senior band, you know, would miss out if we delay. We'd have to look at, we may cause another class to look out. So there'd have to be some shuffling around to figure that out, perhaps two trips in a year. We try to avoid that just because we don't want to hit fundraisers too often from, you know, our music contributors. You know, we want to respect them. But we'll also have to figure out how do we pull that off and only cost one class to miss the trip.
Just another question, and you mentioned if there is a reason to cancel. I'm noting here in the paper book, there's a cancel for any reason coverage, and we are going to get that coverage that's being referred to, so. Right, anything else on those things? Hearing that, I would accept a motion to accept these recommendations.
I would make a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendations.
Thank you, Scott.
Second.
Thank you, Mike.
Dan?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Thank you.
Under student combinations, we do have our all eight underroll for the fourth quarter for grades nine through 12. We'd like to congratulate those students for their hard work, especially in a time of challenge and change. And the dedication that they show to their continued growth in education is highly, highly celebrated because there were many students who found roadblocks over the last quarter. And so we want to celebrate the students, you know, and all students for doing the best that they could at each and every day in response to what they were faced with. Well, then it moves into personnel. Under personnel recommendations, we have a one-year limited teaching contract effective for the 2020-21 school year for John Shell. John comes to us and will be working in a placement at St. Patrick's School in auxiliary services as an intervention specialist. He is currently working as the administrator at Fox City Christian School. And this is a part-time contract of 50% that he will be working for St. Pat's. Letter B, a transfer of certified staff of Tyler Davy to our high school cross-categorical M.D. intervention specialist position that was vacated with a resignation that you're going to see in just a little bit. I'd like to recommend a one-year administrative contract effective August 1st of 2020 to Ned Ruffer as our maintenance supervisor. I would like to recommend three-year administrative contracts effective August 1st of 2021 to Brian Arnold, Chad Bassett, Justine Curry, Ryan Everly, Matt Fransdorf, Stan Nyheart, and Julie Taylor. We have our administrative salary schedule, which is approved and reviewed each year. And this is consistent with our negotiations with both unions. Extended time contracts, the 10, 5, and 3 days that you see for the 2020-21 school year are for our guidance staff, our social workers, our tech department, our librarian, and our speech pathologists. And this just allows them a few additional days at both the beginning of the school year and the end of the school year to both prepare and clean up and do their reporting for the school year that is coming up. Supplemental contracts, I recommend Julie Cummins as our junior high cross-country coach and Ben Lupo as musical director. Volunteers for band, for band camp, Zach Caldwell and Corey Schwartzkopf, I'm hoping. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we accept with regrets the resignations of Joyce Gold as high school intervention teacher effective August 13. Joyce is, has accepted a position at Ford County Career Center. She will be missed, as will Melanie Olis as educational aide, and that resignation was effective today, June 15. And then finally, under personnel, we want to recognize the retirement of Robin Gorg as an educational aide. Her retirement is effective August 31st. That is a little different, and so we will accept her resignation and retirement as of that date. She will be with us to start the school year. We will be utilizing Robin to help with subbing and filling in where those extra sets of hands are needed from the August start date until her retirement. Are there any questions regarding those personnel recommendations?
Hearing that, I would accept a motion to accept those.
I would make a motion to accept the superintendent's personnel recommendations.
Thank you, Scott.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Dustin.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Under policy items, we are to our second reading and approval of the following board policies that are listed here. Again, you have access to the drafts of each of those policies. These are being recommended through Niola, which is our company that we partner with to continue to monitor the ever-changing laws and statutes and mandates coming both out of the federal government and the state government. And if there are any questions regarding any of those policies, I'll take those at this time. Otherwise, President Deb, we do need a motion and second in the vote.
Are there any questions? All right, I would accept the motion.
So.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Scott.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'm going to transfer, as we're going to continue to do in this transition, to Mr. Ray.
Yeah, we have one more personnel recommendation to come your way. We've learned over the course of time that the athletic director role is very demanding in time, covering all events year-round. And with that said, the current 215-day contract, the days worth of that contract get utilized very quickly throughout the school year. And we also want to make sure that we have sufficient time for the athletic director to perform duties throughout the summer months. So we originally came into the contract with the athletic director role having 10 extra paid-as-work days in the summer months to not only close out the current school year and monitor all of the summer workouts, but then to also prepare for the fall sports season, which preparation begins very heavy during the month of July for that August 1st start date. Due to all of the reasons just listed, the 10 days get us close to where we need to be for all of that preparation. But time is of the essence, and time is also appropriate time, more appropriate time is also needed for all of that preparation. So we're recommending a slight change to that contract in which it still stays on a 215-day contract, but then the 10 paid-as-work days in the summer would change to 15 paid-as-work days. So those are days that can be utilized as the athletic director sees fit. In some summers, all 15 days may be used, and other summers, only 10, 12, 8, or 9 may be used, depending on the demand and the requirements. So it's my recommendation to change that extended time contract from 10 days to 15 days during the summer months.
So the first piece there is making that retroactive for this previous school year, is that?
That is correct.
And then the second portion is moving forward into next?
Correct, yes. We'd like to enact that for this current summer and for the following contract. It's a good question. Thank you, Deb.
And then, Heather, you have one more recommendation.
Yep, and I also have.
You might be up here.
Are there any further questions on that topic?
Mark.
Is we, we arranged some, you guys.
You have a letter C.
Oh.
Mark had it printed out, so he's going from his old.
And then letter C, thank you. Sorry, I'm transferring, I'm learning it all the time. So also the, along with that, the recommendation for the three-year contract for Chad Savage as athletic director. So we have the 15 days being enacted for this summer, the 15 days for the next contract, and then also the recommendation for the next administrative contract for Mr. Savage.
And then one more.
And I also have an addendum. This was late breaking today, so with the addendum, our building administrators right now are going through the annual process of placing aides in appropriate positions and vacant positions as they arise. So with that process, we are also, we are always basing the placement of aides based on student needs. And in conjunction with that, also monitoring the current status of district finances. So with that process this school year, we are seeing the reduction in force of two full-time aides and one part-time position for the 2020-21 school year. So our administrators will continue to live out that process in the coming weeks here and fill all band positions, but then also work with all employees to pass along this information as well.
Very good. Are there any other questions on one of those items?
This one?
Correct, very good. I would accept a motion.
Make a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendations.
Thank you, Scott.
Second.
Thank you, Ben.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda would be some points of information from our superintendent.
Thank you. So we don't really have a legislative finance update. I do just want to again comment on how much information is currently being monitored. We've sat in, both in-person and in some regional, and we're talking, so we're monitoring what's happening within our county. We have a meeting coming up with our county health commissioner next Friday so that all schools can sit down with Mr. Watkins and see where we are in Williams County in response to the COVID and what we need to do to keep kids and families safe moving forward. We're meeting, we expand to the Ford County area so that we can get information from Fulton Henry and Defiance to make sure that we're representing what's going on in Northwest Ohio. We're in contact weekly with the regional, so now we pull in the Perry'sburgs, the Springfields, the Sillanias, the Toledo Publix, the schools that are maybe a little bit different makeup than our student body, but still very close to us, kind of that next line of defense and thought process. And we relate, I will tell you, we, Bryan City Schools, relate a little bit more to their challenges because our student body populations are bigger, our busing, you know, we have more buses than all the other schools in the county. So it's really nice to get that sharing of information from schools that are more kind of on our level in terms of size and footprint and services that we offer. And then even beyond that, we're listening in and participating in statewide conversations. I was in a conference call directly with Paulo de Maria, the state superintendent. So there was a group of 20 superintendents that we brainstormed some ideas, told them what our challenges were that were representative of all over the state. So, you know, we really are trying to be good stewards of our students and their education, balancing that with what's the safest recommendations, balancing that with the needs of families because, you know, many parents would love to make sure we can open school doors next fall. We want to do that as well, but we want to make sure that we're ready. We want to make sure that we continue to support student growth, and we're looking at it from all different levels. So I just wanted to share that with the board because Mark continues to, you know, we kind of tag team. We're sitting in different meetings so that we can continue to get all kinds of information. And when we're ready, when we feel that we are ready, we will certainly be making announcements on social media, on our school website, through the newspaper, through radio, through just in-person conversations to our parents, so, and to the community. Just wanted to share that. I mentioned to Kevin about, before we started, you know, hopefully we'll be on a more regular schedule with our July board meeting, but that's yet to be determined. So our next meeting date is July 13th. That is a week early, so just again, keep that in mind, at 7:00 P.M. Our board retreat is scheduled for this Thursday, June 18th, at 9:00 A.M. at the Field House. Remember, our trainer is ready to start at 9:00 A.M. And LPDC is to be announced. And our next business advisory committee meeting will be via electronic meeting conference room, and that'll be at 7:00 A.M. this Wednesday on June 17th. And then we do have our administrators here for the month of June. And I know there's been lots of updates in the Athletic, so we're going to turn it over to Mr. Savage first.
Okay, thank you. Late May, we received some guidelines from Governor Dewine's office as well as OHSAA Executive Director Jerry Snodgrass as far as guidelines to reopening of educational-based athletics. I shared with each board member some documents. I would just briefly touch on some of those. Today, we started actually Phase Two. Phase One, Phase One was June 1 to 5, June 8 to 12. Today, we started Phase Two of our state reopening based on guidelines that, you know, that we reviewed from the Ohio Department of Health, the National Federation of High School Athletics, OHSAA, our local Williams County Health Department, as well as talks with our 6-12 admin team. Expectations, all coaches and student athletes are screened prior to their workout. This is the COVID-19 part of the workout. I shared with you the athlete coach monitoring form that we fill out. They come to the Field House, they get their temperature checked, they go through fever, cough, just all the signs and symptoms there. And then we document everything. That way, if we have to fall back on who is in our facility later on from the Health Department, we can let them know. So that's the form that we're using. We also shared with you kind of our schedule for June and July as far as their open times, their lifting, and so forth. The responses to the screen questions are recorded and stored, just in case an infection occurs and we're asked to reveal that. Any person with positive responses on the screen will not be allowed to participate in the workouts. They're sent home. Our gathering pod max for Phase One was 10 in the gym, 10 in the weight room, no more than 10 in each pod. For Phase Two, which we started today, the main gymnasium for basketball is no more than three per basket, so 18 students in the main gym and 12 in the auxiliary gym, which would give us three per basket and up to two coaches. The elementary gym here, there are six baskets, so it would give us 18 there. Upstairs, there would be 12 more for four baskets. Follow-up court max is 12 students, two quarters per net system that give us 24 in the main gym and up to 12 in the auxiliary gym. The weight room, we have 10 racks inside there. We're allowing up to three per rack station, and that goes along with NFHS standards for safe spotting. Then once you're spotting up over top, one on each end, if they need be. Another side gathering pod is, will be no more than 50 for workouts. I've come close to that today with the very. We're not even close to that today, we're at the very most of 26 to 28 outside. Locker rooms are not used during Phase One or Phase Two, and all the social distancing should be followed. No games, scrimmages, or competitions of any kind throughout Phase One or Phase Two. And again, prior to workout session, everything is sanitized and disinfected and afterward as well. I'll base reminders, no competition, games are allowed at this time. We're not using the school transportation during the summer months, neither bus nor van per local administration. We're not planning on any of the following being allowed to happen this summer before the end of our Phase Three, which is team day camps, travel leagues, overnight states, some passing, things like that. We're hoping that the state will allow us to have some internal competitions during our Phase Three, which that currently is not allowed. Each phase is 14 calendar days. Phase Two should be June 15th to 19th, and then June 26th to the 26th. We have our dead week, which is June 28th to July 4th, that's where we have a lot of our gymnasiums, our resurfaced, the gym floors. Phase Three is set for right now, as long as things go well for Phase Two, July 6th and 10th, July 13th to the 17th would be our Phase Three. And then hopefully, we'll have a couple weeks in there before fall sports actually do begin, which tentative date for that is Saturday, August 1st. The OHSAA is optimistic that fall sports will take place at some point, but to that extent, and how it'll look, it's to be determined. I would expect us to know more information by mid-July. Numbers for today, actually, we started junior high today as well. We didn't do with junior high at all during Phase One. With junior high, we start this, we've got a limited basis, no more than two days per week for volleyball, boys' basketball, girls' basketball, cross-country cheer. Today, high school-wise, we had, I think, close to 33 in the morning for football, which have been so many inside, so many outside to begin with, and then 21 in the afternoon. Volleyball was 30 high school, 17 junior high, boys' basketball 28, girls' soccer is going on right now, and they've been averaging around 20 to 22. So we're expecting to have over 150 kids represented today, day one of our Phase Two. Again, our community has been great, our coaches have been great, just stepping up and implementing the planning we put together with guidance of all of our administrative staff, with the high school-wise, with the plan, with the scheduling, and everything else. So questions for me? Yes?
Are these numbers any different than what you normally would see in a summer workout schedule?
I think, I think early on, they were more because, like, kids just wanted to do things. They wanted to be active, they wanted to get out, they wanted to be a part of, like, back in the weight room. A lot of times, kids really, you know, had access to that, you know, at home, when they were at home for 10 straight weeks, or at least that's supposed to be happening. So I guess I really don't have exact numbers, that we weren't as fluid with the stats of them right now. And we can tell you, you know, every person in every facility at this point right now, so far, for, this is week three of our state reopening. And we have not had to say that they went home at this point because they failed the assessment. So, other questions?
With the sanitation, is that being conducted by janitorial staff or the coaches?
That's our coaches. We have our administration, our custodian, Ned Ruffer, you know, at the forefront. They purchased or who had grant these farters, and they are just incredible. All the other schools want to know what we're using, we talked to them about it, and we're able to sanitize with this Quad 10, disinfect it, our weight room, in two minutes, and then it dries in five or six minutes, and we're ready to hit the next group in there. So we had some forethought with our administrative team and Ned Ruffer's staff a while ago, and we've been able to use, you know, this equipment to real estate topics.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Bassett, if you have anything you want to add?
Just one quick, I just kind of follow-up. What was last week, we were talking about the AP test, Advanced Placement Test, how they switched them up online? I had, we had 30 tests that our students took online, through all of this at home. It's kind of on them, to sign up for, to follow through, to be logged on at this time, do the test. It was significantly less. Usually, it was usually three-hour tests. Most of the tests were 45 minutes, they were sometimes one question. Just kind of makes it a really high stakes test, I guess, if you want to say. It's one question, rather than the essay, but we did have 30 tests that were taken by our students, so I thought that was, kudos to our students. I thought that was good to them to follow through.
Thank you. Mrs. Cox?
Yeah? I just had two quick items. With safety being our top priority, that Mr. Rary and Mrs. Savage said, our kindergarten staff is meeting tomorrow with our teachers to formulate the best plan possible for kindergarten screening. It's going to be a little bit different, but again, keeping safety as our top priority. Those dates are August 3rd, 4th, and 5th here at the elementary. And we, once we have an idea after tomorrow, we will share what that plan is with our parents and community on social media. Another thing that our PDIS committee has talked about is with students being home now for 10 weeks, how to best support their emotional health, social health when they get back here at school. How can PDIS support all of those things? So our PDIS committee is talking about ways to better support the needs of students because it is going to be a transition if we do come back, which I hope that we do, in face-to-face teaching. Those are things that we are talking about to better support our students and our staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Rary, any updates as you finish out?
Yeah, we have one remaining event hanging out there that we're trying to make up from the COVID-19, and that is prom. So that was postponed to Friday, July 24th. So we have a plan in place now that a lot more information has come from the state levels. I should say, we have a proposal in place, and we're reviewing it with the Health Department, and we're going to see if we can actually host a prom 2020. So we're hopeful that following some guidelines and protocols, we're able to get our seniors who deserve this more than ever back together and have a junior-senior prom. And the proposal, once it's, once we fine-tune it, we will release the plans out and go from there with the students and families. So it's the last item that we're trying to wrap up for the 2020 school year, and we're hopeful that it can be pulled off, but at this point, it still is simply that, it's just a proposal, and we'll see where it goes from there.
We do have a need to move into an executive session today. That would be for the purpose of appointment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, charges or complaints against an employee, official, or licensee or student. So I would accept a motion for us to move into that executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for the recommendation.
Thank you, Dustin. Thank you, Scott.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
I do not have any other motion coming out of this executive session, so.